Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this administrative, informal, and workshop session to order. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair President. In the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Vice Chair Williams is on the way. We are now on to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. A couple of things I just want to put on the board's radar and make sure. I don't believe that we have a time yet still for the five-year forecast. Is that correct, Dr. Robertson? Okay. So that is November 18th, so I just want the boards to be aware that the five-year forecast will be on the 18th of November. Time is still to be determined. Historically, I think it's been at 1:00. Also, we will have a special meeting just for discipline on the 18th at 4:00 p.m. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then there's one other thing. Mr. Culpepper is currently our VSBA rep. He, due to personal reasons, is not sure if he's going to be able to attend until the day before the VSBA. And Ms. Melnick is our substitute, and you're not attending, correct? So if we could get somebody that is going to be able to be at the VSBA to cast the vote consistent with what the board votes, I would like a volunteer for that today. Ms. Rogers?
I can do that.
Yeah. Madam Clerk?
Chair Brown, in reference to the VSBA, since it's going to be Ms. Rogers, all you need to do is go up to the welcome desk at the meeting, tell them who you are, and they'll sign you in. So we are covered that as long as we have a member from our school board there, they'll be able to vote.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And did you have anything to report since your name was in line?
Yes. I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the following recognitions and celebrations within our community for the month of November. We will be recognizing the following: Diabetes Awareness Month, which raises awareness about diabetes prevention and management; National Native American Heritage Month, which honors traditions, cultures, and histories of Native American and Alaskan native peoples; and during this month, educational programs, storytelling, and cultural festivals are held to celebrate their contributions and educate the public about their history and ongoing challenges. On November 1st, the community celebrated Dia de los Muertos, which is a holiday that is intended to reunite the living and the dead. On November 8th, the community celebrated Duale, which is the Festival of Lights, and it symbolizes the victory of light over darkness. Tomorrow, on November 11th, the community will recognize Veterans Day, which honors all American veterans who have served in the armed forces. On November 13th, the community will celebrate World Kindness Day, which is a global celebration to promote the importance of being kind to one another. On November 20th, the community will celebrate Universal Children's Day, which promotes the international friendship awareness among children and the welfare of children worldwide. And finally, on November 27th, the community will celebrate Thanksgiving Day, which is observed as a day to give thanks. The celebration is marked with friends and family gathering for a large meal and expressing gratitude for the autumn harvests and blessings of the past year.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Thank you. By now, each of our school board members should have received an invitation to our legislative breakfast, which will be held on December 4th at 8:30 a.m. at Bayside High School.
Great. Thank you. We will now move on to the Mercer update. We welcome Linda Mackens, Director, Office of Consolidated Benefits. And Crystal?
Good evening, Chair Brown, school board members, Dr. Robertson. Joining me this evening virtually is David Keough, Principal with Mercer, and in person is Linda Mackens, Director of Consolidated Benefits. Tonight, Mercer will provide a financial update reflecting claims data from July through September of 2025 and the updated health fund balance as of the end of September. The presentation will also cover medical and pharmacy cost drivers and include an update on the results of open enrollment. In addition, you will also see two projection scenarios. The first incorporates the $5.8 million from reversion as approved by the school board. The second builds on that scenario and includes the additional $5 million of employer contribution option we presented back on October 14th. We want to continue to emphasize that neither of these scenarios impacts employee contribution rates for the 2026 plan year. These actions are designed to strengthen the financial stability of our health fund and positions us for sound planning and decision-making as we prepare for 2027. Looking ahead, we will return in February with an updated report reflecting claims data from October through December of 2025 and a related updated fund balance. As we have emphasized before, maintaining a two-month reserve remains critical to ensuring the long-term sustainability of our health fund. Our ongoing goal is to rebuild that reserve while continuing to mitigate increases for both the employer and the employees. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to David to walk you through the detailed informations, and then we will open it up for questions.
Thanks very much, Crystal. And Linda, I appreciate you advancing the slides here. So as Crystal said, this is our financial update using data through September. And we've got a brief agenda here, but we'll go through the experience, talk a little bit about the cost drivers, and then we'll get into the exhibits to illustrate the projections for 2025, 2026, and 2027. And we'll focus primarily on the 2026 plan year. And then we've got assumptions and methodologies in the appendix, but we won't go there unless directed to do so. So next slide, please. And one more. All right. So as mentioned, the data that we shared in our previous meeting went through June. We're always using a rolling 24 months when we do our analysis and we update projections, but we'll focus here on the data through September. And so I'll call your attention, if I may, to the upper-left corner there where it illustrates the loss ratio, and it's 102.9%. So the definition there is over on the right side, the loss ratio is total plan costs divided by the budgeted premium. And so a higher number is unfavorable, a lower number is favorable. And the budget rates are set, so they would have been set using June data last year for the current 2025 plan year. And we use those budget rates and update the aggregate budget by multiplying the budget rates by the actual enrollment by tier. So you'll see that in those horizontal bar graphs in the center top of the page here. And so the bar graph in the middle, gross plan costs versus gross budget. Unfortunately, the data, the experience for the most recent three months was not good. It exceeded budget. And so that's why we wanted to start up with this exhibit here, just to call that out. You'll see the $12.2 million in June. That was incorporated in the last projection. The three months that have been updated are the $10.8 million, $11.8, and $11.4. All three of those exceeded the budget. So unfortunately, it's an unfavorable development, and we'll use all of this to show how it impacts the financial position and the projection. The line graph at the bottom is the current year and the prior year overlaid on top of each other. So you can see there, the dark line is the most recent period going through September. So you can see essentially four of the last five months were at or above the same figures in the prior year. So with that, we'll move forward and talk a little bit more about the trend on the next slide, please. So this data is an illustration of experience back to 2021. And the line graphs show the incurred claims. So that is specifically based on the date the claims were incurred. So they were incurred in these years, and we're tracking them on a per-employee-per-month basis. PEPM is per-employee-per-month. And we compare that to identify the trend. So in this incurred claims data, you'll see there in the chart to the right, there's a column for medical, RX is prescription drug, and then total. And you'll see the claims trend there on the bottom row, 2025 year-to-date versus 2024 year-to-date. So period-over-period through September, the medical trend is 8.6, 14.6 for prescription, and 10.4 in total. And so that is continuing to run higher than projected. You'll recall that when we spoke last time, the trend that we're using is 9% on an annual basis. So that 10.4 is, as suggested by the prior exhibit, is running higher than expected. Next slide, please. So we want to update you on just some of the cost drivers within the medical claims here. And now, directionally, everything is similar. This is utilization data that we received from Centerra. And so there's one slight difference in the basis for the data, and that is that these are based on paid claims. So it's the date on which a claim was processed or paid versus being tied back to the date on which the services were rendered. But directionally, they're very similar, and this allows us to look at the most real-time processed data for you all. And so you'll see the circle, the red circles there highlight some of the categories that had the significant growth: cancer, nervous system claims, digestive, genitourinary, and pregnancy. Those categories all increased in excess of 20% when we compare period 2024 to the September 2025 data. Next slide, please. So this is the same type of information, but for specifically the pharmacy claims that were processed in the period-over-period. And so you'll see there at the top, we've got total pharmacy costs on a per-member basis. So we're drilling it down to the purest per-capita basis. So when we say "member," we mean any individual that's covered on the plan, whether they be a retiree, a dependent of a retiree or an employee, or that retiree or employee themselves. And so you'll see that 14.1% increase on a per-member basis. And we split that into specialty and non-specialty. And really, we call out the specialty medications. They are the highest-cost medications, and you'll see that in the chart below. They are expensive on a per-prescription basis, and they contribute significantly to the cost. So just a couple of highlights there. Humira is the top specialty drug, and it's contributing about $2.1 million in pharmacy claims. And then the top two non-specialty drugs are Ozempic and Monjaro that are contributing a combined $3 million to the plan. So some of you all may have heard the term GLP-1s, and those medications are in fact in that class of medications. And the school's plan covers GLP-1s for when they are prescribed for the diagnosis of diabetes. And that's what this specifically is being used to treat. GLP-1s for the diagnosis of weight loss or specifically obesity, they are not currently covered under the plan. So anything you see here in that category is related to the treatment of diabetes. Next slide, please. So we talk a lot about the high-cost claims, and that is what has been driving, the primary driver of the cost acceleration in the school's plan. So we've got the historical high-cost claimants here, and this is activity for individuals that have over $100,000 in the year, in the plan year. And so this is for the 2025, you'll see that the high-cost claimants, the sum of the high-cost claimants in the chart down at the bottom, increased about 2.2% from $26.9 million to $27.5 million. So that is a significant driver, and generally speaking. However, the high-cost claimant trend goes is how the plan will generally trend. And we're continuing to see elevated high-cost claimants there. The number of high-cost claimants over $100,000 increased about 9.6% from 125 to 137. So that's the bad news. The good news is, is the intensity of the claims actually declined about 8%. And when I say "intensity," I'm referring to the average cost of those high-cost claimants. It dropped about 8% from $217,000 down to $199,000 per person. So there's, like anything you might be tracking, there's the volume times the cost. So the volume increase is really the primary driver rather than an increase in the intensity of these high-cost claimants. You'll see over there to the right, there's a note of 0.3% of members enrolled in the plan, which is about 40 individuals, or is 40 individuals, accounted for almost 16% of the total plan spend. And that is a bit eye-catching perhaps, but it is entirely normal in employer-sponsored plans. Next slide, please. So that wraps up the utilization and the cost elements, and we'll talk about the projection in just a moment. It, of course, will take into consideration all of the claims experience that we just described there. This exhibit is intended to capture the enrollment that resulted from the recent open enrollment elections that all plan participants went through. So the first column is the enrollment proportion in each of the tiers of coverage that was assumed prior during, in the midst of the rate-setting process. So we set the rates for 2026, the budget rates, and we assumed the enrollment distribution that you see there. And then we want to compare that to what actually happened as a result of the elections that were captured in the recently concluded open enrollment. And so you'll see there the variance. There was a little bit of a shift away from tiers where there are dependents covered, a little bit of shift towards employee or retiree-only coverage. As you'll see that 1.7% variance. So the increased, the employee/retiree-only category increased about 1.7%. And so you can see the figures there. We also look at it by plan. So the school's plan includes two offerings, a point-of-service plan and a consumer-directed health plan, which is an HSA-qualified plan. And the enrollment has been relatively stable over the last several years, but we are seeing a slight, modest growth in the CDHP enrollment. You'll see there the 0.9% increase. So folks shifted from the point-of-service plan, which does have higher contribution requirements for employees, and they elected to make that transition to the CDHP plan. And these figures are, as noted in the footnote there, they are combined for employees and retirees, but the changes were very comparable for each. So with that, that describes the open enrollment activity, and we can move to the next slide, please. We'll talk about what all this means in terms of the plan year projection. So in this exhibit, we break down the various components of the projection. Again, we'll focus on that middle And again, we'll focus on that middle column, the twenty twenty six plan year that's upcoming here. And, uh, what we do is we look at all that experience that we talked about. And we use a rolling twenty four months of experience with two thirds waiting on the most recent twelve months, one third waiting on the prior twelve months. And that's what we updated using data through September. So we incorporated in three months that, uh, were, were above budget. So they were not good. The, the experience, um, we did, did not improve. In fact, it, um, it, 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 it was unfavorable. And so that's what we're capturing in this projection here. So the, uh, we also took into consideration the movement by tier and by plan. All of this is reflecting what is now known to be the elective enrollment for the twenty twenty six plan year. And the gross cost is a hundred and thirty two point six million. The employer contributions actually declined, uh, a little bit, uh, because of that shift that I mentioned of folks from, uh, moving away from dependent heavy tiers. And also that, uh, that modest movement from the point of service plan, which is a little bit higher cost, uh, to the CDHP plan. Uh, so that employer contribution was a hundred and five point seven when we used data through June, which was what was used to set the rates. So that's the amount the schools would have budgeted, a hundred and five point seven. The results of the, of the enrollment, when we multiply that times the budget, the employer budget amount, it actually has fallen a little bit to, to the one oh three point six. Uh, employee contributions are just that, uh, a, a function of the rates, the contribution rates that were previously established multiplied by the new enrollment. Um, and you'll see that the, the, the math, uh, flows down there to the hundred and twenty one point one million. And so that difference, that difference is, uh, has to fall fr- fall to the health fund, uh, and that drawdown is the eleven point five. So right now there are three sources of funding. The employer contribution, the employee contribution, and a drawdown of the available funds from the health fund. And those are the splits for that a hundred and thirty two point six million of projected gross cost for the twenty twenty six plan year. So the health fund balance as of five, uh, as of September twenty twenty five is five point six million. And that is, uh, lower than was projected by virtue of the fact that those claims came in higher in that last quarter, those last, uh, July, August and September that we talked about, because they were above budget. That resulted in a drawdown of the health fund, uh, at a higher rate than was projected. Uh, and so you can see that, uh, that drawdown, uh, so the projected health fund balance at twelve thirty one twenty twenty six is now estimated to be five point nine million, uh, negative. So you'll recall that the previous, uh, projection using data through June, before we got this most recent three months of unfavorable claims experience, that was a positive one million. It was projected to be a positive one million at year end. This updated data now for twenty twenty six, um, is yielding a projection that's negative five point nine million. And the projected, uh, two months, uh, reserve again is two twelfths of the projection. And so that's twenty two point one million. So the, the, the shortfall relative to the desired health fund balance is that negative twenty eight million dollars. So unfortunately, the financial picture has, uh, has, has not improved and, and in fact gotten, gotten worse and, and, um, I will boil that down to, to say the health fund balance, um, swung by, uh, the, the, the six million dollars to, um, to negative five point nine million. So the options that we were asked to prepare, as Crystal mentioned, uh, on the next slide, please, is the impact of, uh, infusing five point eight million dollars into the plan. And so the mechanics of, of that, of how that five point eight million dollars actually gets into the plan is, is at your discretion. For purposes of this exhibit, we have added it to the row of employer contributions. So you'll see it went, uh, it went from one oh three point six million up to one oh nine point four million. And it's off by a tenth due to rounding, uh, but we added five point eight million to that. So, uh, Crystal mentioned that investment, that infusion into the plan does not affect the contributions required of employees or retirees. It simply improves the financial position of the plan. So the math flows through, the employee retiree contributions are, are unchanged. Uh, and the, and the result is a favorable impact to the projected health fund balance at year end. Uh, that gets it to, uh, uh, we'll, we'll round it to zero, but it, it's coming in at a negative hundred thousand dollars. So rather than the, the, the negative five point nine million projected balance, it is projected to be negative by a hundred thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So the alternative, the second alternative is the, an additional five million dollars added to the five point eight million investment. And this exhibit, uh, flows through just as the other one did. So all of that investment is reflected in the row of employer contributions. Uh, so that employer contribution increases to one hundred and fourteen point four million. Uh, just as before, there's no impact to the employee or retiree contributions. So they're static at seventeen and a half, uh, and the math blows through that additional, um, five million on top of five point eight, so ten point eight million, uh, results in a projected health fund balance that is, uh, back in the positive at four point nine million dollars. So, uh, that concludes the exhibits that we've got prepared here today. Uh, I am happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Melnick? So it's hard to just gloss over slide seven, the pharmacy trend drivers, without just a little discussion about that, because clearly that's a driver, right? In, in the, in the increase, I'm assuming correct. So, um, looking at the bottom of that slide, um, with the diabetes drugs, Ozempic down to Skyrisi, um, it says prescriptions and it says claimants. So tell me exactly what prescriptions mean. Are we, do we have seven hundred nine people that are taking the drug or do we have three thousand four hundred thirty one?
That's right. The, the, the claimants are the number of individual members that are on that particular medication. And the prescriptions are the number of total fills. So if you were to divide the prescriptions by the claimants.
Four point eight apiece.
The number of scripts, number of prescriptions per person.
Okay, yeah, that's like four point eight apiece. And so that's a large, I mean, that's, so I guess just, how many people do we have on our plan, first of all? How many employees?
Um, it is, uh, about fourteen thousand employees, I believe.
Yes, and there's approximately twenty three to twenty four thousand individuals.
Okay, combined.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Combined, okay. So just in this slide alone, so we're self insured. So I'm sure that this is, do they look at this as a risk? Is that what contributes to some of this? So if you have seven hundred nine employees that are taking drugs for diabetes, is there like a risk formula that they use that drives some of this?
Yes, so we're looking at all of this experience in our actuaries. So, so, so you, um, accurately, accurately emphasized the fact that you all are self-funded. And so Centerra does not bear risk in this. So they are your health plan administrator, but they don't bear a risk in it. The risk is, is yours as a self-funded employer with some protection built in at that, uh, specific stop loss level. Um, but we look at all of the data, our actuaries here at Mercer do the projections and take into consideration the trends within your population and within your experience. So specifically the utilization of prescriptions that you referenced there, the high cost claimants, the medical conditions, uh, and, and then we also consider trends within the market, the healthcare market, and use all of that data to project forward.
Okay, so we, you know, we just generally think power in numbers, right? That we're, are, everything is going to be lower because there are so many of us. But there are also other drivers that, uh, large numbers also increase your, your risk. There, you know, there are more people to get sick. Um, so that's all part of it. I, it, you know, again, this, this is really hard to, this is, this is a really hard thing for all of us. So, um, I think that was my only question. If I have one, I'll come back. Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, and, and Ms. Mackinson, thank you for all the great data that triggered more questions in my mind related to slide number nine. And you probably will have to get back, which is okay. I was curious, um, as David talked about the different subgroups, um, as, and now that we have the rate increase, um, I would be interested in seeing employee numbers for those who were previously enrolled in the POS plan. And because of the cost, they now had to take a, well, I don't want to say a lesser plan, but it is, a, a different plan. Um, and, and only those who we already had employed last year that had coverage with us. I would be interested in seeing raw data on how many of them now are on the, um, cheaper plan, the CDH.
Yeah, we can look at that, um, information. What he is, what David is showing is just people, you know, the numbers of people. So it doesn't get to your point of who actually made a change. So we can get that information.
Right, and, and I don't need new employees who elect. I just want to compare last year, um, to this year because it's unfortunate because of cost, people had to make those tough decisions.
We will get that information.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
I'm going to circle back again to, um, slide seven and kind of piggyback off of Ms. Melnick, but other question, um, with regard to our major increase in our prescriptions. So are we looking, and I'm, I'm not going to ask you, David, I'm, I think I'm asking Linda, are we looking for solutions for these costs? Um, with perhaps other avenues of delivering medications that would not be through, um, you know, would be through a less expensive provider? Um, whether that is like mail in, I, I will just be upfront. I am one of those people with diabetes and it is much cheaper for me to get my medicine, and I'm not on the school plan, through a mail-in prescription service than it is for me to get it at the pharmacy. So again, if we're having these, experiencing these high, high costs, how can we then lower our costs without telling our, our, our employees that you can't get this medicine or you can't get that medicine?
Our plan already has, um, a lot of, um, risk mitigation in there. We have a closed formulary, which is any new drug to the market, um, is, is not available until, you know, tried and failed through like a step therapy. Um, and we also have a required generic. It's not mandatory because you can still get a brand, but you pay the difference in the co- you pay the difference in the copays and then the difference in the cost of the drug up to a certain limit. Um, the plan also does have pre authorizations. It does have what I mentioned, the step therapy. So they try you at a lower cost drug. And then if it, you know, you can't take that drug, then they will ultimately approve. Um, to your point about, um, there has been a change in diabetic re- uh, rebates.
Yes, for sure.
So the way that would work is the, um, pharmacy benefit manager would provide rebates back to the plan. And then a certain allocation, of course, comes to our plan that we get quarterly. Um, but because of the change in the diabetic drugs, um, people at, when they're getting their prescriptions should start to see a lower cost to them, and it's not coming in rebates back to the plan, which is good for the member.
Yeah.
Um, but in terms of other, um, avenues of medications, we don't have another source at this time.
Okay, and, and is that something that's like possibly to be discussed? I mean, because you're consolidated, so like I know that it has to be with the city. But I'm just thinking that if prescriptions are increasing by such a high cost, then it would be reasonable to believe that this trend is going to continue as we move forward and that it's, you know, and we have to prepare for that. So in that preparation, I'm just wondering, is that something that the city and, as far as consolidated is thinking of? Either, you know, and I know that some people talk about, oh, other, you know, places have their own pharmacy for their employees and that sort of thing, just a way to help us lower costs without hurting our employees?
In terms of the other division that has an onsite pharmacy, we have explored that. Um, we did that in twenty fifteen, again in twenty twenty. And we compared the, the actual ingredient cost of the drugs of our top hundred by utilization and top hundred by cost. So it wasn't every single drug. Um, but it was a, uh, getting the top hundred of both of those categories accounted for over fifty eight percent of the totals, um, scripts. And there wasn't a say, and so we compared, um, two different onsite pharmacies, Cerner and Onsite RX, which is one of the other division uses, unless they've changed. And we compared that to our drugs, uh, through our pharmacy benefit manager, through Centerra. And there were not savings that would have been achieved, um, by actual utilization of our members on the plan to operate an onsite pharmacy. And, and in terms of other options, we can certainly explore that. Part of the RFP process, um, that we award, reawarded to Centerra includes pharmacy. So if we were to carve that out, there may be some impact to admin fees, but it's something that we can explore.
And, and to your point, we did it in twenty twenty, but the costs have exponentially grown since then. So it could be that in the last five years, I mean, we've seen, our costs are through the roof. And they're just, there isn't relief in sight. So, and this doesn't seem to be a once off year. We seem to be trending up. So maybe it might be worth exploring again.
Mr. Callen?
I'm going to try to stay as positive as I possibly can so that we all learn in a happy upbeat environment. And with that as my intro, let me explain my reaction to tonight's presentation. I'm an old school guy who does things old school ways. And that means I get hard copies of everything that's presented when the agenda is put together. Came by this morning bright and early because I was out of town over the weekend and picked up my copy of today's agenda. Went through this section and followed the presentation that was presented tonight, page by page, and the story is building to a crescendo. We're going through slides one through nine and it's building up with data. And all of those slides are available to me on the packet that I picked up. But when we get to the grand finale of the symphony and we get to pages eleven, twelve and thirteen, I'm looking at lots of fine print, lots of small font, lots of numbers that are arranged in an altogether different format than was presented to me when I picked up the hard copy packet this morning. Since I want to stay positive and since this is a section of the school board agenda meeting where we're all trying to learn and deepen our understanding of difficult subject matters, this is not a good way to run a railroad to show the finality of all of the detail that was collected and accumulated. To show the finality of all of the detail that was collected and accumulated, and then put it on a spreadsheet that looks like this, and shows up and being presented by David as he's going through lots of data, I may be speaking for only myself, and that may be true, but this is no way for me to understand the complexity that accompanies this subject matter.
I apologize. When we uploaded the presentation, it had been put in a format that provided summary pages, so it did not have the full projections with the 2025, 2026, and 2027, and it was thought that that summary would help explain, but we felt it was more confusing, and we felt like we needed to return to the format in which we had shared with you for the, you know, the past two meetings, because otherwise it, it was confusing, and it was almost like starting over. So I apologize that you didn't have the presentation that we presented this evening. We thought that this format, because the other one, while it was a summary, it didn't allow you to do the math, and it didn't allow you to see, okay, this is what the, the balance was as of September 30th, which then carries over to 2026, and so that was the reason for the change.
Yeah, let me add that, so I certainly appreciate your frustration, Ms. Callen. We had a meeting at four o'clock on Friday, and in that presentation of four o'clock on Friday, Ms. Woodhouse, myself, Ms. Mackens, Crystal Pete, the format that, that you have in front of you, we felt was going to be disadvantaged to the school board because it was a different format. So we requested, we pretty much demanded to Mercer that they put the presentation back into a format we're familiar with, which is what you saw on those last three slides. Well, this was, by the time you talked to Mercer, it was like 4:45. So clearly, they did no work on Friday between 4:45 and 5:00. They came in, and today, and, and gave the updated information, and, and I don't know what time you would have received it, Ms. Tony Otto, but it would have been this afternoon. So we had two choices on Friday at 4:45. Choice A, we go to the chair and we punt the presentation, or we get the right presentation in the right format and give it to you today. We chose to get the right presentation in the right format and give it to you today. This is, this is a situation that was a little beyond our control, this is what happens when you try to turn information around quickly. Mercer was not originally going to have this information to us until the middle of November, and I said that is not acceptable. The board needs information on the budget in a format that's going to give them time to digest the information. So I am going to fall on the sword on this one, this is on my, this is on me, and, but I want you to understand why the situation occurred.
Well, I thank you for the explanation, and again, the intent of my comments is to just give feedback so that we get better at the process that we engage in, and process is a key word in lots of different circles these days. And so if we can enhance our process, especially on something as important and significant, but at the same time, as one of my colleagues has said before, this is rocket science. And if I'm looking at something for the first time, when I show up tonight to participate in the meeting, you're not going to make much headway with me comprehending the complexities that accompany this stuff. So if we can just do that to get better in our process, then that's my contribution to the team.
Thank you for your feedback.
You're welcome.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, two things. You mentioned that the, the weight, the diabetes drugs, the injectables, the Ozempics, are specifically for diabetes. Is there ever going to be a chance that it will be open for weight loss?
I was looking into that prior to the RFP process, and then during the RFP process, I had to, you know, suspend those discussions because it was with Centerra. And they, they can create a disease management program around that. Unfortunately, and David can speak to it, we're just not in a position to take the risk at this time. A lot of employers that had implemented it before things were skyrocketing are actually, like, he, he has seen where people have changed their plans mid-year to remove it because it's unsustainable, but it's certainly something that we're interested in exploring in the future.
Yeah, it's been an issue, I've heard from somebody over the years, it's been an issue for, for quite some time, and for some people, that's honestly a good, a, a good option for them, but it's just so cost prohibitive. You know, and when your option is surgery, gastric bypass, which has a high failure rate, you know, all of those things, yeah, you feel bad for people who, yeah, would like that option. The other thing is, is, you know, we don't address board members, but I am going to address the pharmacy. So we did initially really start looking into that, and we put a little team together with city council, and I remember just straight away, it was more than just prescription, and by sheer volume, we see what we, you know, this can't be a one-site place, right? And, and then it was finding a brick and mortar, so there is more to it. If you, if you investigate it again, I know it's, it's a huge undertaking, and Chesapeake does not have consolidated benefits, right?
They do not.
Okay, so we're talking about a school division that's half our size, half, yeah, half the employees, so that's why it's a, a lot more manageable for, for them. I know in theory, it sounds great, it's just, it's, it's a huge thing.
And they are self-insured, so just because they have an onsite pharmacy doesn't mean that drugs cost less.
Okay.
It, they may or may not. They experienced, when I was looking at the difference in the drugs, is some drugs were less expensive, some were more expensive, and then specialty drugs, they don't dispense some specialty drugs, so you have to get them from a specialty pharmacy, which is some of these high cost. The way they set their co-pays would be no different than us being able to set a co-pay on our plan that's lower.
Okay.
I don't know what their total pharmacy costs are for their, you know, for the percentage of their total, how that compares to what the percentage of our total is.
Okay.
They do, you know, have, they've also incorporated an onsite clinic.
They have, yeah.
That, they don't offer a consumer-driven health plan with a health savings account, and those in our plan would not be eligible for something like that, because you can't have first-dollar coverage from another health source, other than your consumer-driven health plan and your HSA.
Okay.
We do live somewhere between theory and reality with so many things that we do, and this is, this just happens to be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Dr. Robertson related to all of this. So there was a presentation about previously the potential infusion of $5 or $10 million. When do you anticipate that we're going to be having that discussion again?
So the first $5.8 million the board put into the reversion resolution, which the city council will take action on November 18th. If the city council approves a reversion resolution as presented, then we would come to the board and ask the board to take that action on the $5.8 million at that time. At that point, I think it would be prudent to perhaps wait until 2025 is completely over, and the February data that we get, that'll really show us where we are, maybe we don't need to put $5 million in, maybe we only need to put $3 million in. I think we wait until February to make that request, so that would be the timeline to get, go back in and rebuild the health fund balance.
Okay, thank you for that. And, you know, I, I just want to bring that up, as there is some historical things that have happened, not with this board and these people sitting here, but in 1996, related to budgets, and so we can't be in a deficit. And so I would just ask that perhaps if that comes back in February, that, you know, we have a conversation about which things weren't spent to make those allocations happen. That would just be my request. Ms. Melnick?
And I think it's important to note for the public that infusing that $5.8 million is not going to change the employees' contributions, and that's the saddest part about this conversation. It sounds like, you know, it's going to help some way, and it, it'll help our bottom line, but it's not going to help the employees at all, so that's a tough pill to swallow.
All right, well, I don't see any more questions at this time, so thank you. And we will now have a facilities update, and we welcome Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer, and Melissa Ingram, Executive Director, Office of Facility Services.
So, good afternoon, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Executive Director of Facility Services. I am looking forward to discussing with you today a facilities update prior to this upcoming budget season. We'll start today's presentation looking at our maintenance projects, capital improvements that keep our schools running safely and efficiently. These projects impact building systems such as HVAC, roofs, and foundations, our first-tier building system that we've spoken with you about in most detail over the past few years, along with fire alarms, windows and doors, and turf field installations, and accessibility for athletic fields or ADA compliance. Next, we'll shift to new construction projects, tri-campus additions, and the Princess Anne High School replacement project. And finally, we'll look at funding as we are preparing for the upcoming budget season for fiscal year '26, '27. So on this first slide, we'll take a look at our roofing systems, starting with good news, completed roof replacement projects. We've done a tremendous amount of work over the past four years, completing about a dozen re-roofing projects across our schools. Most of these projects are multi-phased, lasting about two years, with the majority of work occurring in the summer months. As you can see at the bottom of the list, our last two re-roofing projects have completed Phase 1 construction this last summer, with Phase 2 work scheduled to pick back up next summer 2026. So the next slide on roofing highlights roofing work to come, starting with our Phase 2 projects from the previously, previous completed list, with re-roofing projects listed above the red line to be started over the next two years, and below the red line are projects we are evaluating for future years. Overall, we're continuing steady progress in addressing priority roofing needs, and with funding provided, we are working to catch up to our deferred replacement unsatisfactory needs, with almost a third of the roofs on this list being in fair condition. As our buildings get older, their condition can change. Our maintenance teams regularly update these lists and focus on preventative maintenance to reduce roof areas in unsatisfactory conditions or at high risk of failure across our schools. We'll now take another look back over the last four years, this time with our HVAC projects, and again, the progress we are making on deferred replacements with funding provided. This list comprises almost two dozen HVAC projects completed over the last four years. With HVAC systems being complicated, only the parts of each HVAC system that truly need replacement are prioritized, while extending the life of other HVAC system components whenever possible. In many cases, keeping systems running nearly twice as long as their expected lifespan. As you can see from the list, from boilers, chillers, rooftop units, abbreviated RTU, and many others, you'll see this completion list varies in which portions of the system replacements were needed. Some schools on this list have required almost the entire HVAC system to be replaced, such as at Cook Elementary School shown at the end of the list, with Phase 1 completed this last summer. We're also adding HVAC to kitchens, listed second to last in the list above Cook, where none existed before, improving efficiency and working to meet occupational and safety and health standards, with now only 18 kitchens operating without HVAC, down from 24 kitchens four years ago. So this next list in front of you now shows that there's still work to be done on our HVAC systems, with temperature and humidity control important in maintaining healthy and safe learning environments. Continuing with Cook Elementary, which is now at the top of the list, for Phase 2 construction to be done this coming summer 2026, this chart shows the projects above the red line that are scheduled to begin construction over the next two years. For systems below the red line, we are carefully evaluating and scoping projects to replace only what's absolutely necessary, just as prioritizations were made with projects above the red line and those on the completed projects list. Reviewing this list, you can see that all of these systems are in unsatisfactory condition, meaning hard to maintain and at high risk of failure. But through phased work and strategic planning, we're making steady progress in addressing HVAC needs across our schools. We're also continuing to add HVAC to kitchens that are without, as you can see from the red arrows, with six in planning over the next two years or above the red line, and over 10 being evaluated on this list in total, planning to bring our kitchens without HVAC down to 12 in the next several years from 24, just four years ago. So now looking at the last of our top three building system that we have been sharing with you over the years, our foundations. These are nearly complete. Bayside Middle School is on track to wrap up by summer 2026, while Kempsville Middle moves into Phase 2 of 3 next summer. Holland Road Annex is in the design phase and planned, but all related work is paused at this location until we are more certain of the needs related to Princess Anne High School replacement project. Now looking at fire alarm replacement projects, also critical to keeping our buildings and students safe. Above the red line, you can see projects completed, and those we'll tackle in the next two years. Below the red line, systems are still in unsatisfactory condition and are being carefully evaluated, monitored, and planned for. Our next list, windows and exterior doors, also keep our building envelopes, air quality, and humidity intact, much like our HVAC and roof systems do. Replacements of these systems also take time, not just for planning and funding, but because environmental assessments are required for integral materials such as caulking. Above the red line are those schools we are working to address in the next two years, all at various stages of evaluation. We continue to identify needs and monitor those below the red line, along with our other building systems. Now looking at turf field installations. Only three high schools remain without turf fields, with Tallwood High School, which we looked at when we spoke about turf fields last year in terms of drainage issues, completed this last summer 2025. Lanstown High School is scheduled to be replaced next summer in 2026, which you will see on an agenda item in the near future, and Cox High School to be installed in summer of 2027. We are planning for the final school, Princess Anne High School, to get new turf installed with the school replacement project. As we'd also discussed with you last year, once all schools have turf installed, we'll plan an average of one re-turf per year, averaging $900,000 annually, with fields continuing to be monitored for safety and longevity. And accessibility is also a top priority for our school division. All high school athletic fields are now ADA compliant, thanks to collaboration with school leadership, athletics, and our parks and recreation teams. At the middle school level, Brandon Middle School and Corporate Landing Middle School are fully addressed, and we're currently constructing accessible sidewalks, bleacher pads, and portable restroom pads at Salem Middle School and Bayside Middle School. pads, and portable restroom pads at Salem Middle School and Bayside Middle School. Remaining schools on this list are being evaluated with needed improvements planned over the next three years, making sure students and visitors can safely access our fields. So now shifting from maintenance to new construction projects. In front of you here is tri-campus additions, and we are making strong projects, process on this project. Design is continuing. Bidding is planned for late winter 2026, just a couple of months away, with construction to begin in summer of 2026. This slide shows the same information shared at our last briefing to you, with no significant changes from what was previously presented. We've been discussing Princess Anne High School replacement project with the board for several years now. Most recently, over this summer, as updates from the superintendent CIP working group were given, in which moving forward Princess Anne High School replacement project was a large focus. This slide reflects the same information shared during the last CIP update presented to you. To keep the Princess Anne High School replacement project moving forward, Ms. Lanetti recently addressed procurement options, as recommended by the city, with the Policy Review Committee in October. And so as I mentioned in our first slide, again, we're here to you today with the objecting of sharing this update in preparation for the upcoming budget season. You can see on this slide, the current year's approved fiscal year 24, 25 CIP funding sources. Over the past year, we've collaborated through Dr. Robertson's CIP working group with school division members and city leadership, most recently at the Joint Modernization Committee meeting in October. You can see on this table, in year one, and above the total line, that the school special reserve fund was increased to 20.5 million dollars. And later this month, the school division's reserve, reversion request goes to city council, which will include funding for next year's special reserve fund of 10 million dollars, and additional reversion funding not shown on this list, with the objective of continuing to increase cash contributions to the CIP. We look forward to continue working with city staff on CIP funding and continuing to work together on joint needs of our schools and the community. And so this includes my presentation tonight, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. My question is, would, is just confirmation that what I am thinking the process is in place for the tri-campus. Frequently, when I'm out and about in the community, I get questions about, do those numbers reflect enrollment? What happens if we all of a sudden have a major boom or, or growth with students? And, and I have been assuring the community that, you know, we have a specialized department with demographers, and that, that information is being monitored, because we certainly will not have trailers out there. So could you address a little bit, again, how we're monitoring the enrollment trends in that community, in my district, in District 4 with Newtown and the collapse of Betty F. Williams and Diamond Springs?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Green. Yes, we, we have just recently received September 30 data and are monitoring all three schools and their membership. Everything is on track right now. We definitely, as we looked at the number of classrooms needed in the, in the additions at each of the two schools, Diamond Springs and Newtown Elementary School, did apply a planning factor to that as well, in case there was slight growth. We also have room there for pre-K VPI and ECSE classrooms. So in the case something needs to move around, we do have contingency plans there. However, all the data is tracking this current year, and we expect that the additions will be satisfactory to what enrollment trends are showing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I was happy to see on hold the Holland Road Annex, the foundation. Is the re-roofing also on hold as well?
Yes, ma'am. So we have put on hold, we had quite a bit of designs done during the PPA, and then some we were trying to continue on for interest of time, and then also possible use, such as like our gym floors by other schools. However, we've put everything for Holland Road Annex on hold until we get further direction and understanding of what Princess Anne High School replacement project might need.
Okay, thank you. How long can that feasibly be on hold for, before, I mean, before it becomes too problematic and it's a bigger challenge to deal with? How long can we hang on?
So we'll work at the discretion of the board. The foundation repairs probably will take the longest. We've done the other schools in three phases. We know of problematic areas that we would probably do first, and the fact that it's an unoccupied building, hopefully we'd be able to speed things up if we, we got to be a crunch time, if that's your question. So if we all of a sudden said, okay, we're definitely a go, we would certainly work with our contractors to speed up whatever was, it is that we could speed up. And the fact that the building is unoccupied could, could greatly help us in terms of getting work done quicker than it would at a school building that's fully occupied by students.
Right, I'm, I'm actually, so my concern, my bigger concern is, we're talking about foundation issues and re-roofing, and sometimes if you don't deal with those, they become much more expensive problems to deal with in the future. And so I'm, I'm curious, you know, are we talking, if we put it off six months or a year, it's not a huge deal? But if we do it longer than that, it becomes twice as much money? What, what timeline are we looking at there?
So thank you for the clarification. We're monitoring constantly. You know, we do have people just for use of the building, using the building, both outside community members and others. So we monitor the buildings with our maintenance team and our inspectors. So definitely a year, I, I would not see any issue in a year timeframe with upkeeping. And if we had to do something in the interim, prior to any replacements, we would be able to try to, to address that.
Okay. And then I see that we did nearly 3.4 million in the rooftop units for that same facility. This is going to sound a little silly, but it's new. So say we were to do something different with that annex, is that unit, any portion of that still usable somewhere else?
So, that's great memory. So that was, we needed those when we had the school administration building being done, and we had to move over our admin team to Holland Road Annex. As we do with all of our buildings, we did it with Alaskan Road Annex, we're looking at Bayside 6 now. We would certainly have the first right of refusal for any contractors and see what would be cost-effective in terms of reusing anything from our school buildings that maintenance might need. And you hit the nail on the head, I think the HVAC systems would really be looked at as well.
Okay, so there is a possibility that we can still benefit from that system more, even if something different were to occur?
Sure. If we would use the whole thing, there would be a cost to remove it, but certainly we are very aware what's in our facilities and anything that has a similar asset at another building, we would try to recoup at the very least parts and components from.
Okay. And then I have one more question, then Ms. Melnick. So it looks like the cost of these repairs that are on hold, these maintenance projects, are 5.2 million. And it's estimated that the swing space has a cost here. Does that cost include those, or is that over and above that, that swing space cost?
So the swing space cost is also for the Special Education Center wing, but the cost does consider those type of improvements in them? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was asking if the re-roofing and foundation was in the cost proposal for the swing space at the annex?
Oh, yeah, that, that was going to be my question, too, because initially it was with the PPEA.
Right.
Yes, okay.
So Ms. Melnick?
Okay, no, I'm good now.
Okay. Vice Chair Williams?
Yes, I, every time we get these, I, you know, it's, it's shocking how expensive it is to put HVAC in a roof. You know, I mean, it's just very eye-opening to, to add all those numbers up, which I think that a lot of people forget about, all of our maintenance, you know, work. So I appreciate y'all being diligent on that. So, so just like on slide four, the renovations replacement. So there was a group done in year one, and then every single one under that line, they're all going to be done in year two. They're not in order necessarily, or are they?
They're main, above the year two mark, so the year, the red line on slide four, that, above that is what we're hoping to start by year two.
Okay.
And they're mostly in order, but it just depends what prices come in at, too, and how quickly we can get things going, so.
Okay, so above everything, and then we just get to the others?
Sure.
Now, when we get to the others, is it, because I see a fair, I see satisfactory, I see unsatisfactory, then I see a fair slash unsatisfactory. So, so I would just think that the fair, unsatisfactory would not be in as bad of shape or on your little metrics as, as the unsatisfactory. Is, is that not a?
That's a great observation. So right below the red line there, Brandon Middle School, you see it says, "Consider HVAC." So the roof itself, there are portions of it in fair and portions in unsatisfactory. We have an HVAC project. Whenever you have a lot of construction and work going on in a roof, it definitely impacts it as well. So we try to do them in tandem when possible.
Okay.
However, we're trying to do the HVAC project in a way where we will preserve a lot of our roof. So we, our hope is that the roof on Brandon Middle School will be deferred, and we have over 120 units at Brandon Middle School to replace, but we'll do it in a way where it will preserve the roof as much as possible so that we can defer that roof.
Okay.
Because there are portions that are fair on it. So we, it's, nothing doesn't touch one another, and that's also a lot of the part of our prioritization as well, so.
All right, well, that, that makes great sense, because when I looked at this, I'm like, I would have shifted it a little bit, but I still wanted to see exactly why. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions we have. Ms. Lanetti, I just want to confirm, we do not have a closed session, correct?
I will tell you, I'm speaking with outside counsel right now. I think not, but we're trying to verify whether we need to ask about settlement authorities. I just, that claim's come in the last couple of minutes. If I did, I would do it at the end of the school board meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, we are going to adjourn to recess and reconvene at 6:00 PM for our formal meeting.